Hey, you doing good, Harry? Good? So, we do a public hearing. Feel free to... I'm gonna be doing something right.
Okay.
So, I have a quick question here. Do you need to do a roll call?
Yeah, you should do a roll call. It's... I put it on the agenda to do a roll call in order. A roll call. And if anyone wants to speak, you sort of...
Okay.
And then we adjourn with another roll call. We can go to roll them.
Okay. So, do I actually do...
I think we're already be in the meeting from the beginning.
You don't have to... All right, ready? All right, I'd like to call this meeting to order. If you all please rise and join me in my dedication. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please call the roll.
Trustee Hudson?
Here.
Mayor Marge?
Here.
Trustee Bowden? Trustee Jones?
Here.
Trustee Maravka?
Here.
Trustee Sluse?
Here.
Trustee Sterba?
Here.
All right, public comments.
Hi, everyone. I'm Andy from Archie's. I have a couple of questions. Christmas in the Village is rapidly approaching. I haven't seen anything with regards to the businesses, where we do like the little activities inside businesses. Can anyone help me who I need to speak to?
Trustee Sterba said...
Yeah, I'll get ahold of Tammy. And I'll have her reach... I know in our last meeting, she was talking about reaching out to you.
Okay.
Everything. And I know like the bowling alley used to do something. Now that you guys have the bowling alley, she doesn't reach out to you. You're about having something done there.
We didn't miss a deadline or anything?
No.
Okay.
No.
Because I was getting worried.
Oh, no, you're good. You're good.
Awesome. And then the second thing I have is on the Village of Peatown website, there's like a business comes up in the background. How do we get Archie's on there?
Just talk to Amy and, you know, we'll get a picture and we'll get that.
Awesome. Thank you very much. We appreciate that. And then my last thing. I see on the agenda, item F, for 206 North Second Street. Will we hear what the proposed plans are from the village for that property tonight? Because obviously, we have an interest. We have Archie's right opposite the bowling alley, right next door.
Sure. No, I mean, tonight is just a discussion. There's no action, but we're gonna... I want the board to discuss it and come up with a plan.
Okay.
And move forward.
Yeah, because I know we can't comment when you guys are discussing it. So, I just wanted to... Appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name's Brian Shaw. I own a neighboring home to the 206 North Second Street property. And I just wanted to, you know, it was a little up there on the agenda. So, there... Correct me if I'm wrong. There has been a court order to demolish the home.
Correct.
Okay, and we're still deciding whether to follow through or is that...
That's kind of what the discussion is.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to express, you know, it's obviously been an eyesore for a long time. But I worry a little bit about safety. I've seen kids run around that property. The odor that comes out of that in the summertime, and I get it in my house. So, I just really want to encourage the demolition of the home.
Okay. What... Where do you live?
I'm at 109 West North, so I kind of kitty-corner to it. My butt's up to the bowling alley.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
If anybody's speaking, you could sign in for me, please. Be helpful for the minutes. Thank you.
Sure, thanks.
Anybody else? All right, I'm moving on to consent agenda. This week, we have just the minutes from the October 10th regular board meeting and payroll accounts payable... Payroll pay period ending October 15th in a total of $72,282.40. And accounts payable for the pay period ending 10/21 of $44,337.86. And that's all coming out of the general fund. Are there any items that trustees want to pull out of the consent agenda? If not, entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second.
And moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Sterba.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Maravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Sterba?
Yes.
All right, moving on to committee reports. The Administrative Oversight Committee had a meeting. Our chairman isn't here tonight, but one of the members... Trustee Hudson, you want to give a quick update to that?
Yes, AOC had a meeting on October 13th. And the main part of that meeting was to discuss the position of building zoning, and we would like to add code. This is a position that was last filled in 2003. In 2004, there were some thoughts on filling this position. And I don't think, remembering back, that they ever found the person to fill the position and they decided to go another way. That's when we started using different inspection companies. So, now the discussion is we really could fill that position. We really need to because it would work out better to have somebody here at the village that works with the people that live in town, the builders that are in town, alongside of the inspection companies. So, I was asked to look at it. I did, did some research, looked at other municipalities and villages. And when I got all done, I... Of course, you know, different towns that have a different sized population, they operate in, you know, different ways. They have more people working for the size of the town. But I circled back of what's best for Peatown. And actually, I talked to Amy about this. What we were looking for back in 2004 is exactly what we're looking for now with the addition of somebody to also look into the code ordinance. So, we are working on a job description. And also, we have something that we can post when we decide to do that for the position. And so, that's where we're at with that. We also talked in that meeting about the update for the underwriter request. And that's something that's on the agenda tonight with the bonds.
Okay. That's it. Perfect. All right, didn't get on the agenda, but Nick, you want to give us a Christmas report?
Yeah. We had a meeting last week about it, and everything's going pretty good. We have our next meeting, the 16th. And I know donations are due Monday, the 31st, I believe, is the 31st of Monday. So, if you haven't got those in yet, if you can get them in. If you have any questions, you can get ahold of me or Tammy. Tammy's handle on all of it. I can get you her email address. And also, I think that was basically it. I covered everything else before me. So, but it is going to be December 10th. Because one Christmas in the village is going to happen. So, and then next meeting will be the 16th at 4:00.
November?
Thank you. Administrator report?
Just a couple of quick things. We've got a flood drive coming up November 1st. It'll be at the fire station. It'll be our last one of 2022, and then we'll get the 2023 schedule out. So, if you can donate, there's a shortage. Just a reminder, there is a village clerk position open. It's an appointed position. It's part-time. So, if anybody's interested, and you know anybody who might be interested, please let them contact the mayor. Let them know to contact the mayor, or they can contact me. We're just gearing up for budget season here, and so, we're going to be preparing for that. So, I'll get a calendar out to all of you guys soon. And trick-or-treat hours are 4:00 to 6:00 on Monday, the October 31st.
4:00 to 7:00.
4:00 to 7:00. And on December 30th, 2022, from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., we're going to have an open house for Chief Moore, who's retiring from the Village of Peatown. So, just want to have you guys save the date if you'd like to stop by and say hi to him.
What was that?
It's going to be at the Legion on December 30th from 4:00 to 7:00.
Okay. Police chief, you don't have a report. Public Works, Troy, engineering?
The rail in the street project, we're just trying to keep the contractor moving on that. The storm sewer has all been installed. The concrete's been removed. But we haven't yet gotten a date from them on when they're doing excavation and the rest of the project. There is a concrete shortage now. So, they, you know, told us that that's going to be an issue. They've also mentioned some soils that may need to be contaminated, which we're going to try to look into before they can start excavation. So, we just found out about it today, so we're going to be looking into that.
Angie from Aqua Couldn't Be Here Tonight sent me a quick email that the Reggie Road water tank is out of service as work progresses on the tank rehabilitation and repainting. Contractors asked for a five-day extension. This will put the completion date at November 4th. That's her report. The treasurer did give us a nice report that for the period ending September 30th, so kind of half of our fiscal year. Hope everybody has, you know, if they had a chance to read through it. It's really got a lot of good information. Just, you know, the highlights are that we're collecting more than we budgeted and we're spending less than we budgeted. So, we're actually in a pretty good position right now. The sales tax is up quite a bit. Income tax is up quite a bit. And like I said, our expenses are under control. So, all in all, it's a pretty positive report. So, hopefully, that will continue throughout the rest of the year. That comes to my comments. Hopefully, everybody's noticed the cleanup that was done on I-57. We've been after IDOT for the last two and a half years to clean up our intersection. And, you know, they got started on it a couple of weeks ago. They still have more to go as far as clearing those trees out. But, you know, just what a huge difference in visibility and safety at that intersection. So, I want to thank, you know, everybody who's contacted, you know, legislators or IDOT. I know Bob, our public works guy, has been in contact with IDOT quite a few times. And Troy has also been in contact. And Amy and I have been, you know, every legislator, we meet, we talk about that. So, it finally got through to somebody, and so, happy to see that got done. I didn't get Bob's report. Let me back up. So, Bob was on vacation. His report was just real quick. Leaf collection is in full swing. Just reminder, don't put leaves in the street. Put them on, you know, in the parkway. All the fall tree plantings have been done. They planted 61 trees. So, with the 50 we did, you know, last spring, you know, for 110 trees. So, I wanted to thank them. They did a great job. Thank trustee Jones for putting that program together. He was out there helping plant trees. I was out there planting trees. And your son was out there planting trees. So, it was... The public works guys did a great job. Then Bob said the street sweeper will be running, you know, the next few weeks to help keep the leaves off the street. So, the branch pickup is done. So, don't put your branches on the curb. That program will start back up in the springtime. Moving on, we don't have any old business, new business. And we have a public hearing to receive public comments on the proposal to sell in the amount to not exceed $3.1 million, general obligation bonds, alternative revenue source series 2022 for the purpose of financing certain tax increment financing district improvements. So, I'd like to call this public meeting to order, and please call roll.
Trustee Hudson?
Here.
Trustee Jones?
Here.
Trustee Maravka?
Here.
Trustee Sluse?
Here.
Trustee Sterba?
Here.
And Mayor Marge?
Here. All right, so, let the record reflect. This is a public hearing being held...
Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just a reminder.
Yes.
Trustee... Any trustee who owns property in the TIF area cannot participate in the public hearing. Needs to recuse themselves.
But this isn't... They don't own property in that TIF district.
Oh, it's not in that TIF district? I thought this was downtown.
No.
Oh, great.
This is the...
My apologies.
Yeah. Good.
I'll repeat that way.
Yes. Okay. Let the record reflect. This is a public hearing being held pursuant to the requirements of Sections 10 and 20 of the Bond Issue Notification Act of the State of Illinois as amended. Notice of this hearing was published on October 6, 2022, in the Vidette, a newspaper of general circulation in the village. This is a hearing regarding a plan to issue not to exceed $3.1 million in aggregate principal amount of the village's general obligation bonds, alternate revenue sources, series 2022. Proceeds of the bonds will be used to, one, finance improvements to the I-57 interchange, Wilmington-Piatown Road and 88th Avenue, including, but not limited to, the site for the new commercial auto, truck, and travel center with convenience store and quick-serve restaurants, nationally branded hotel and a freestanding restaurant, and other capital projects within the Peatown Tax Increment Financing District II established on August 26, 2019, as further described in a TIF redevelopment agreement approved by the village, including, in connection with said work, acquisition of all land or rights in land, mechanical, electrical, and other services necessary, useful, or advisable thereto, and to pay certain costs of issuance of the bonds thereof. The bonds will be issued by the village in accordance with the provisions of Section 15 of the Local Government Debt Reform Act of the State of Illinois as amended and shall constitute a general obligation of the village payable from, one, the distributive share of incremental taxes derived from the TIF district, and, two, ad valorem taxes of the village for which its full faith and credit have been irrevocably pledged unlimited as to rate or amount. This public hearing is required by Sections 10 and 20 of the Bond Issue Notification Act of the State of Illinois as amended. At the time and place set for the public hearing, residents, taxpayers, and other interested persons will be given the opportunity to express their views for or against the proposed plan of financing the issuance of bonds and the purpose of the issuance of bonds. First of all, were there any written comments submitted?
No, not too many.
Okay. At this point, is there any questions or comments by any of the public here tonight? There being no comments, I move to need a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
Motion. Second.
Moved by trustee Hudson, second by trustee Jones.
Jones was second. Who was the first?
Hudson.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Maravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Sterba?
Yes.
And Mayor, do we need a mayor vote?
Yep.
Yes. Okay. We good?
We're good.
Okay. Moving on then back...
Thanks, guys, for coming on to ask questions and answer questions.
Well, we still have the next one.
All right, thank you.
They might want to stand.
Oh.
Or I'm getting...
No.
Oh.
I can stand for the next one.
Okay. Bye, Austin.
All right, moving on to...
Thank you.
Item B, motion to approve Robert W. Baird &amp; Company Incorporated to serve as sole managing underwriter or placement agent for the Village of Peatown, Illinois on its proposed offering and issuance of approximately $3.1 million general obligation bonds, alternative revenue source series 2022 to finance the TIF district improvements. So, this is to hire Robert Baird &amp; Company to handle the general obligation bonds that we are going to issue.
They'll be the underwriters. We did go out for RP, and they were... They were our only submittal, but they're a very reputable firm. And we would recommend, staff would recommend that we utilize them.
Discussion from the board? Okay. Entertain a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Maravka, second by trustee Sluse.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Maravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Sterba?
Yes.
All right, moving on. Item C, ordinance to approve variances necessary for requested signage for the Peatown Travel Center. So, you've got the application for the different signs for the travel center in your packet. You know, our sign ordinance probably needs to be updated. It doesn't, you know, doesn't really cover a whole lot of these highway-type signs. But so, that's why we need these variances. So, Mr. Patel, do you want to talk? Or somebody want to talk about signs at all? Do you guys have any questions about signs?
I'm Larry Strang from Doyle Signs.
Okay.
And working with Sue Hassan. It's an exciting new project at the Peatown Travel Center. Yeah, your sign code is a little outdated. But not unlike a lot of other municipalities trying to catch up. Questions you may have about any particular sign?
So, it looks like there's going to be two pretty tall ones. One's 120 foot, one's 90 foot. Is that correct?
Yes.
And both of those are going to have, or maybe one of them's going to have an electronic message board?
Yes, one will have a price changer.
Okay.
For diesel and gasoline. The other will have, also have a digital display for advertising what he has on premise.
Okay.
So, both of these will be going up or just one?
Both.
Both, okay.
Okay.
So, does IDOT... Do they have any say in this at all or no?
If we were advertising anything but on-premise businesses or brands, yes, but otherwise, no.
Okay.
That's the litmus test.
Got it.
With the next side, what are the differences? Like, are they both going up or are they... Is it one versus the other? I don't understand.
The sides of the... The pole signs, the big ones?
No, 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 on the building, whatever these are.
Oh, those are wall signs?
Yes.
Yeah, that's two different sides. Well, one is showing a night view.
Okay.
Yeah. Just a night view, just...
The words are so small.
And it's two elevations, I see. One is the front. The other one is the elevation facing 57.
So, the other one's just a side view?
Yeah.
Okay. That's all. I was just a little confused on that.
Any other questions? Okay.
That's it?
I think that's it. We just need a...
It was easy, huh?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, can gas prices be this again? $2.30. Make sure that the gas prices are there.
We saw our own prices. All right. I'll need a motion. And what ordinance number is this? Do you have that?
No, I don't.
Okay. So, I'll need a motion to approve the variances necessary for requested signage for the Peatown Travel Center.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Maravka, second by trustee Hudson.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Maravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
Trustee Sterba?
Yes.
All right, moving on to item D, ordinance to approve a settlement agreement for Commonwealth Edison Company and Azivar Audit Solutions in the amount of $33,077. So, if you recall, a few years ago, we entered in an agreement with Azivar. They are a company that audits a lot of our utility taxes and just making sure that we are getting everything we should from the utility. So, they do things like check to make sure that, you know, people's addresses are correct and that the bill is that they're being charged the proper utility tax. So, they did find some discrepancies with Commonwealth Edison bills. And this is an agreement, a settlement agreement. Commonwealth Edison didn't agree with what Azivar said they owed. And so, this is in a settlement agreement. Kind of got it right there. So, instead of going through litigation with Commonwealth Edison, this is a settlement. So, I guess the one question I have is, is the village receiving that $33,000? Or is that something we split with Azivar then?
Well, Azivar will take a certain percentage, and then Azivar's attorneys will take a certain percentage. So, our take will be about $18,000 is what we'll get back to the village. And then we'll also make sure all those addresses are on the rolls, and we'll get all that going forward.
So, really, this contract never really... We never had to pay out anything. It was always a, if they collected something, you know, they get a take of that. So, that's kind of what this is.
So, we're receiving this money, not paying it?
Correct.
Gotcha.
All right, so, need a motion to approve that settlement agreement?
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Sluse, second by trustee Maravka.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Maravka?
Yes.
Trustee Sluse?
Yes.
And trustee Sterba?
Yes.
All right, item E, resolution accepting a proposal from Robinson Engineering for engineering and surveying services for the downtown street state Phase 2 project within the Village of Peatown. And just a reminder, trustee Hudson and trustee Jones, since they own property in that TIF district, have to recuse themselves. So, the downtown committee had reviewed this proposal from Robinson Engineering. They asked them to update a couple of things. And so, this is what they'd come up with. And it is something that is eligible for reimbursement from the grant funds that we're going to be getting from the state. So, this is to help us get started with this project, do the engineering and the construction drawings. Anybody have any questions? If not...
Can we ask a question?
What's that?
No.
No.
No. Can't even ask a question?
No.
What if I go sit up there?
All right.
You text it over to me.
It's subject to FOIA. Don't do that.
All right. Any other discussion? If not, entertain a motion to accept the proposal.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Slus, second by trustee Maravka.
Trustee Hudson?
abstain.
Trustee Jones?
abstain.
Trustee Maravka?
Yes.
Trustee Slus?
Yes.
Trustee Sturba?
Yes.
And Mayor.
And Mayor March?
Yes. Okay, moving on to item F, discussion regarding demolition order for 206 North Second Street and substantial plans for the property. So just to update everybody, we did receive permission from the legal system, from the Judge, I'm sorry, Will County Court System. They issued a demolition order for that property. We had asked that it be condemned, and they, and they did agree on that. And we have got the demolition order. So I just wanted some guidance from the board. If you want to continue with that process, the next step in the process would be to, you know, get some bids to proceed with that.
Was that sold also with the bowling alley, or is it like a separate piece of land? I mean, I don't know for sure. My understanding is it's separate and not purchased by anyone yet.
This demolition order was our objective for the last, how many years?
Yep.
And now it finally comes to fruition, and we spent a lot of time and a lot of money. And I say we move forward.
Anybody else?
I agree with Mike. Move forward.
I also agree.
Okay. Seems like it's consensus. So we're not taking any action on this. I just wanted to give the staff some guidance on moving forward with this. So we'll proceed with giving some quotes for demolition. Okay. Moving on, questions of the press?
None tonight.
Anything else from the board?
I think, is there a trunk or treat or something going on Sunday?
Yes.
Downtown?
Yes, trunk or treat, yeah. Thanks for bringing that up. Out on First Street between Main and Corning.
Eleven to two, I think.
Eleven to two, yep. And then, of course, Halloween, four to seven, you know, keep an eye out for kids. And the election's coming up, and I think that'll be before our next meeting. So make sure you educate yourself. There's quite a few referendums on the ballot. You know, some important ones, so educate yourself and get out there and vote. Like Amy said, there's a blood drive November 1st, so sign up right across blood.org. And.
And there's a zombie run.
Oh, yeah, the Park District has a zombie run on Saturday. Great. Good. That's it. Entertained motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Moved by trustee Jones, second by trustee Sturba. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Great, thank you.
I know.